The hearing for the revision of the refuse collection fees. And then lastly, the Director of Parks and Recreation will be submitting a report requesting to release a request for proposals for tennis operation concession.
Mr. McFaul, maybe I was skipping at the switch. Did you announce that the housing for next week is canceled? And the redevelopment will be on Wednesday rather than Tuesday, and we will decide...
That won't be next week. That's the following week. This is on the...
Twenty-fourth.
This is the seventeenth.
Aye, aye, aye.
Twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Well, you got a...
We'll announce that next week.
That's what's going to happen. Everything is moving because of the genocide celebration on the twenty-fourth.
That's an advance review.
So, things will be moved. Now, you've got a preview of what Mr. McFaul will say next week. Okay. What is next, please?
Three B is proclamation designating April fifteenth through the twenty-one, two thousand and seven as National Library Week.
Thank you. And do I have Kira Lazarini? Ah, that's Kira. Well, I'm going to read this proclamation. And I'll tell you now, a six-year-old first-grade student, Kira Lazarini, who goes to R.D. White Elementary, is one of the student artists who drew self-portraits for a special calendar produced by the children's room. She's going to accept the proclamation. She's been a library kid, that's what it says, kid, for practically her whole life. She started it practically her whole life. Oh, my gosh. She started attending the library programs at six months with our Mother Goose and Me Storytime for babies. She's a regular library visitor and a great reader. I bet she is by now. Boy, I hope I read this right, too. The proclamation reads, whereas the Glendale Public Library will celebrate National Library Week, April fifteenth, twenty-first, two thousand and seven. And whereas after 100 years of library service to the community, today's Glendale residents also visit the library for computer classes in English, Spanish, and Armenian, for children's storytimes, and teen programs to foster a love of reading, and for adult literacy instruction to help build a stronger workforce. And whereas after 100 years of library service to the community, today's Glendale residents also visit the library electronically on the Internet to find health and business information, newspaper articles, audiobooks, and music to enrich their lives. And whereas after 100 years, the community uses the Glendale Public Libraries to hear music recitals, to experience art and dance, to ask questions of great authors, to connect to the world via wireless Internet, to meet city council candidates at live forums, and to see their children graduate from Head Start schools. Now therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim April fifteenth to twenty-first, two thousand and seven as National Library Week, and invite all citizens of Glendale to join with their families and friends, and visit the Glendale Public Library to get a new centennial library card, to bring their overdue books back to the library during the fine free week, April fifteenth to twenty-first, and by reading. And the biggest advocate of the libraries, Councilman Rafi Menuchian, will present it to you.
Hi. How are you doing? I would like to present this proclamation to you for National Library Week. Of course, libraries have always been my favorite places to hang out when I was younger. Now, I hang out at home with my kids. But I think the libraries are a great place to be, to learn, to see, and to experience new things. And we're opening a new library in Adams Square, and I will be there at the opening, regardless of what happens. And it's my pleasure to, and my honor, to present this proclamation on behalf of the city council and the mayor. So, do you get this proclamation? There you go. Here are some things.
Kira also brought something to present to all of you.
Oh, very good.
The library was fortunate enough to receive a grant from the Ezra Jack Keats Foundation. And if you'll notice, Kira's portrait is right here, where the children drew self-portraits. And we were able, because of the grant, to have them printed. So, there's one for everybody this evening.
And I'm sure she has a lot to say, right?
She does.
Very good.
She just was at the library today, and she got some books. You want to tell me what you got?
Hold it down.
There you go.
I got, um, "Tonight on the Titanic," Junie B. Jones', and "Mimi Jim's Birthday." Junie B. Jones' is a gradit- grad- 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 graduation girl, and Nancy Drew books.
Very good.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Turn me down. Thank you. And next, city council and staff comments will be made at, I'll move to after oral communications. With that, what is next?
Next, item five is consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Thank you. Oh, yes. I have to pull five B and five D.
I'll move the rest.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council members Menuchian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Euseffion?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Five B, please.
Five B is Director of Public Works regarding approval of final map of track number six-two-nine-three-two, condominium conversion, fifty-four units located at one-one-one-four, one-one-one-eight, East Palmer Avenue. Resolution approving the final map of track six-two-nine-three-two.
Thank you. Nancy Kent, two minutes.
My name is Nancy Kent. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I know someone who lives in Los Angeles, who is a renter and is being evicted right now because of a condo conversion. So, the reason I turned in a card for this was, I was wondering why the two condo conversions that are on the agenda tonight are on the consent calendar. And I don't know whether these involve any tenant evictions or not, so I'm not really speaking for or against this. I just wondered why it was not being read into the record. And perhaps what I'm about to say is better for the oral communications, but I was wondering how items get chosen to be on the consent calendar. And I heard at a recent meeting, not too recent, but that in the city of Burbank, all of the consent items are read into the record. So, I was wondering why that's not done in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on five B one?
We should have someone...
Well, are we going to do this during or at?
Again, this is not oral. This is an action item.
This is taken off the consent calendar. It's an action item.
So, it's an action item.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Howard?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I won't get into the general explanation of consent items. That we can do under responses to oral. But on the issue of final maps, final maps are ministerial pursuant to a Supreme Court decision entitled Youngblood. So, that's essentially why that is on the consent calendar. Once the city engineer finds that the conditions of the tentative map have been met, in other words, substantial compliance has been achieved, it becomes a ministerial act of the city council to approve a final map.
Meaning generally, you have no choice but to approve it.
No discretion.
You have no discretion. That's why they're on there.
Understood. Move five D one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members Menuchian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Taro?
Yes.
Euseffion?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Five D, please.
At five D is Director of Public Works regarding approval of the final map of track number six-three-one-eight-three for an eighteen-unit condominium conversion subdivision at one-zero-four-three Thompson Avenue. Allen and Saban possession subdivision at D-one is resolution approving the final map of track number six-three-one-eight-three.
Thank you. Nancy Kent, you're okay?
Same comments.
Same comments? Okay. Is there a motion on?
Move five D one.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council members Menuchian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Euseffion?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Thank you. That from you, Mr. Starbird?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I was using my little pen.
Swiss.
Swiss. Swiss my pen to write with. Good. I've got a real pen now. Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Okay, that concludes consent calendar. What is next?
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited. Item is not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to this speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Todd Davis. Plotting us name for the record.
I'm sorry?
Your name for the record.
My name is Todd Davis. The timer is set here at... Okay, there it is. Okay. On behalf of Brian Cook of the Los Angeles Lakers, we'd like to thank the City of Glendale for allowing us to announce this fun and exciting basketball event. Last year, Brian Cook held his first annual camp at Burbank High School, and this year, he'd like to bring it to this community as well. As you'll see in this next video, Brian is really hands-on when teaching the game of basketball. He enjoys spending time with kids, and he has lots of fun doing so.
Lights, camera, action.
We're at the first annual Brian Cook basketball camp. My first camp ever. We've got around two-hundred-and-twenty kids. Just trying to give back to the community, keep your kids smiling, keep them out of trouble. And we've had a pretty good turnout thus far. So, that's what's going on today. We really like it to extend it through all the years that I'm playing. And that's the plan, is to have one of these every year. And I think that if we market it right, we can get a lot of kids that can have a lot of fun and learn a lot of basketball. My name is Laker Peters. Where you play at, man? I play at Laurel Hall. Laurel Hall is probably the best kid in Camp Cookie this year, man. Little left-handed, big guy, can shoot, got footwork. Going to be good. Watch out for his name. We'll see you next year. Much support during the season, man.
So, Brian Cook of the Lakers, once again, is hosting his second annual camp out here in this area. The camp is open to boys and girls ages six to sixteen. And the camp runs from July twenty-third through July twenty-seventh, nine AM to three PM, at Irot Center, which is on the Glendale-Los Angeles border. The address is three-three-four-seven North San Fernando Road. And he, along with a couple of his teammates, work on basketball fundamentals with the kids. Along with Brian's presence throughout the duration of the camp, there'll be other NBA special guest appearances. Lunches are provided, autograph and picture signings, pictures and autograph signings, and education scholarship is awarded, and just lots of fun. And lastly, Brian continually gives back to the community by offering camp scholarships for kids who are less fortunate. And he also provides NBA and Laker knickknacks to every camper. So, for more information on this camp, you can call eight-one-eight-two-eight-one-nine-five-two-nine, or go to www.bryancookcamps.com. Thank you.
Could you repeat the phone number again?
Yes. The phone number would be eight-one-eight-two-eight-one-nine-five-two-nine.
Thank you. Very nice. Now, you've got to go to Burbank?
Yeah.
See them too, eh?
Yeah.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Worthwhile program. Okay. Our next speaker will be Mike Nagel. And Bonnie Adams.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If it's okay with you, I'd like to let Bonnie Adams speak and then follow her.
Sure. Bonnie Adams.
I'm Bonnie Adams, Glendale resident. How many people in this room believe that blind people hear better than sighted people? Say aye.
Aye.
Say it again louder.
Aye.
How many people don't think blind people hear better than sighted people? Oh, come on.
They don't know.
Okay. I'm not trying to make anybody uncomfortable or put them on the spot. Actually, blind people, to, you know, kind of get rid of a myth that has been floating around for thousands and zillions and hundreds of years. Blind people do not hear better or worse than anyone else, honestly. I wouldn't kid you. It's the truth. Blind people hear differently, not better or worse. In fact, I have a slight hearing loss in my left ear. Now, when I say blind people hear differently, we listen for different things that sighted people would take for granted, because they can see them. We listen for different noises. We listen for different landmarks. We listen to people coming down the sidewalk, whether you're using a cane, a white cane, or a dog. It's very difficult to travel, especially when you're totally blind. Now, partially blind is a little bit different, and there are all... I don't even want to get into that much unless people are interested at some point. But it's variable. So, partially sighted people can see to one degree or another. But totally blind people are at a real disadvantage. Mr. Zern, I'm going to get you again tonight. You, we went to these... I went out today and checked the signals. Now, Mike is going to do the PowerPoint and give more details on what we did. But today, I actually went and checked out every single signal that you have pointed out, okay? The only one that worked was a buzzer thing that was not... It won't do. It'll never do. You have to have something that goes above and beyond the sound of traffic. And now, you've got hybrid cars that are very quiet, and those cannot be heard by a lot of blind people. Now, if you... You have to get something on both sides of the street that is noisy. And I mean, the buzzer's a great idea, but make it louder. Make it like fifty decibels louder so you can hear it over the traffic on both sides of the street. You cannot... And put a bell on the other side. I don't care what you use. Let the kids from Caltech do it. I mean, you're wasting... I don't know where you're getting your research done. I don't know what these blind people do that you're testing. I don't know where their roots are. I don't know whether they take access to go to work. I mean, just because you take access doesn't mean that you don't walk around and shop and stuff. I don't know what their roots are. I don't know where they live. I don't know what kind of routine they follow. However, you can't do it this way. The talking signal won't even talk to me. I mean, you can't... None of these signals work. There are none. There are no audible signals in Glendale. You need to have them. It's desperately important for these things coming up. It's just for the future. You've got to have something, even if it's simple. It doesn't matter. You don't have to have any high-tech, you know, real stuff. A bell and a buzzer would do. A chirp and a cuckoo would do. Who cares? As long as it's a different sound than the cars, and that it makes a blind person's attention come to the fact that that street can be crossed. A voice is very nice to tell what side of the street is doing. Who cares? It doesn't matter. If that buzzer...
Oh.
I just want to say one more thing. May I, Mayor Weaver? I just want to say that anybody, a blind diabetic who has neuropathy, that puts their hand on that... You can't hear that buzzer unless you really get up close to it, unless you put your hand on the light itself and feel it vibrate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Mike can take over.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and Glendale residents. My name's Mike J. Nagel. On March twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven, during oral communications, Ms. Bonnie Adams here complained that there were no audible crosswalks for use by blind persons here in Glendale. Afterwards, in council's and staff comments, Mr. Steve Zern responded that this was not true. He said, in part, "We have one in the northern part of the city, Glendale and Pacific. We have another one in the southern part of the city at Chevy Chase. The cross street escapes me." That's a verbatim quote. Immediately after leaving the meeting, Bonnie Adams, Dr. Richard Espirito, and I went to the intersection of Glen Oaks and Pacific and tested all six legs of the crossings there. We found that there were no audible signals on any of the crossing legs at that intersection. Between March twenty-seventh and May thirtieth, I personally went to every signalized crossing on Chevy Chase Drive from San Fernando Drive up to Glen... Rather, I'm sorry, up to Verdugo Road, and found that there were no audible signals at any of those crossings. On April third, Ms. Adams and I reported our findings to the council. Afterwards, Mr. Zern responded, in part, by saying, "We have them at two places at Glen Oaks and Pacific, and these are individual devices, so some of them are just a single leg of a four-legged intersection. We have them at Verdugo and Maple, Central and Stalker, Verdugo and Broadview." When Mayor Weaver asked, "Are they already in and operational?", Mr. Zern responded, "The first five are." Mr. Zern also said, "I've been to each and every one of these. I haven't been out there in a couple of months, so let me make sure they're all fully operational. But we were using devices that had a clear audible signal when it was clear to walk." Therefore, this last Thursday on April fifth, I went to each of the four intersections that Mr. Zern named and tested the signals at each one, mostly six times. At Glen Oaks and Pacific, here on the PowerPoint presentation, the crossing request box marked two on the map gave the voice message, "The walk light is on," at a volume that was so low, it was nearly drowned out by traffic noise. However, it's made across Pacific number one, never made any sound at all. And it only made this one sound, it only made that sound one try out of six crossings. Likewise, on the legs crossing Glen Oaks, none of the boxes ever made any sound at all. At Central and Stalker, neither box A or B made any sound. At Broadview, the boxes marked A and B vibrated when the walk light was on. However, unless you held your ear right up to the box, you can't hear that vibration, although you can feel it unless you've got some kind of nerve damage that would prevent you from feeling vibration. And some people, especially diabetics, as Ms. Adams said, do. Then finally, at Maple and Verdugo, the box marked A, one time out of six tries, said "The walk light is on." The other five, of course, it didn't. And B made no sound at all. Now, I suppose Mr. Zern could argue that there were audible signals at two of the intersections, but this would not be accurate. For a crossing signal to be safe for a blind person in the crosswalk, the sound from the cross street is used to guide him, so the signal on the opposite side of the street must be loud enough for him to hear on his side of the street. It also helps him determine whether or not it's safe to cross in the northwest or east-west or north-south direction. A properly trained guide dog might keep a blind person in the crosswalk, but two out of three blind adults in this country do not have guide dogs. It's even worse for blind children. Until about five years ago, guide dogs were not available at all for children, and only a handful of blind children in the entire country have guide dogs today. In summary, despite Mr. Zern's protest to the contrary, Glendale still does not have any audible crosswalks. Thank you.
Next speaker, Julie Fein, followed by Todd Warden.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Julie Fein, and I work for Lakeside Healthcare. I'm also the president of the Greater Glendale Council on Aging. I'm here tonight to invite you, to you and the public, to our second annual Evening in Tuscany fundraiser mixer. The Greater Glendale Council on Aging supports seniors in Glendale by providing small, one-time financial grants to help them through crisis situations. For example, this year, we've helped seniors by purchasing a refrigerator, turning on utilities, and also helped a senior relocate their housing near a caregiver. There are things that no other funding consort can provide. The Evening in Tuscany fundraiser mixer will be held next Wednesday, April eighteenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Glendale Civic Auditorium. We'll have wine tasting generously provided by Goudas and Vines and Montrose, delicious food being provided by several Glendale restaurants, and we'll also be honoring Genevieve Cecilphus and Margaret Hammond, who is longtime involvement in the community service to Glendale. There'll be raffle and silent auction items. Some of those items include a wine chiller. We have certificates to spas and several gift baskets. There'll be music and entertainment, and the entertainment will be provided by Elliot G. and his Italian vagavon. The tickets for the event are thirty dollars in advance and forty dollars at the door. For more information, you can call eight-one-eight-six-three-seven-two-thousand, extension one-one-four-nine. Again, the number is six-three-seven-two-thousand, extension one-one-four-nine. And we look forward to seeing you there. And here are some invitations.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Todd Warden, followed by Albert Hoffman.
Good afternoon, council members. Good evening, actually. My name's Todd Warden. I'm a new staffer at the AQMD, and I'm representing the AQMD today on a few issues that are happening in your area. First, I want to bring to your attention the AQMP, which is essentially the Air Quality Management Plan. It is essentially our general plan for the four counties that the AQMD represents. We are having hearings in your area. There will be hearings April nineteenth at nine-thirty at the City of San Fernando Council Chambers. Would love to have members of the city staff, as well as the elected officials, go there. Residents are also invited as well. They will discuss a number of different issues pertaining to air quality and the health effects of that in Southern California. Next, I would like to bring to your attention the Carl Moyer Program. The Carl Moyer Program essentially helps exchange older diesel engines that are higher polluting than the newer natural gas or the more efficient, more modern diesel engines. The AQMD essentially helps fund the replacement of engines in the different fleet vehicles that you might have, different trash haulers or industrial areas in the city of Glendale need to apply by May fourth. The next issue is we are having air and asthma pollution. Our global problems come... The next issue is we are having an air and asthma pollution, our Global Problems Conference. It's down in Anaheim on the 26th and 27th of April. The governor is our keynote speaker. Speaker of the Assembly, Fabian Nunez, will also be there as well. You're more than welcome to attend. We would love to have representatives from this valley come to the event as well. The last thing I'd like to bring to your attention is the most exciting, is the lawnmower exchange program. It's a very exciting program that the AQMD sponsors every year. Essentially have eight different locations throughout Southern California, where you can bring your old gas-powered engine, or, I'm sorry, older gas-powered lawnmower, and we will exchange it for $100 for a modern battery-powered Newton lawnmower. And the issue with the lawnmowers are, one regular gas mower puts out as much emissions as essentially 43 cars. So by exchanging your lawnmower for $100, you're taking off the emissions for 43 different, 43 modern cars. It's relatively light. It has a battery pack in it, and residents are encouraged to come and bring their old polluting, gas-powered lawnmowers. We have an exchange in Pasadena, very close by, on May 5th. We also have one in San, Santa Clarita on June 16th. And they also work. I'll guarantee that. If you'd like to go outside afterwards, I can show you how to use it, but I will leave some items for you, and can distribute to the community as well.
How about the people who want to buy a new gas lawnmower and instead decide to buy one of these? What is the cost of that?
A, a new mower of this type is essentially $400 on the market.
Can they, can they buy that in that location?
Yes, you can. You can. Actually, we can't buy them at our location. We're doing an exchange. You can buy them from Newton, which is the lawnmower company. They make them and sell them locally, and they're also out of Vermont.
Does the mower have to be in operational form?
The mower should be operating. We're trying to take functioning mowers out of circulation.
Okay.
And you're going to take that one with you?
Yes, sir, I will.
Do you have your eyes on it? I have my eyes on it, too.
Well, the city could use one. We have a lot of grass out there.
And the other interesting thing about these is they're about half the noise level of a regular mower. So if we can pass bans on blowers for the noise ordinances, a mower like this significantly reduces the footprint with noise. I appreciate your time and consideration.
You have a grass lawn?
The, I'm going to bring my mower down. The time, the time of the event?
It is all morning on the 5th, I believe.
Okay. So you, I guess you go on the website to find the actual location.
AQMD.gov is the website. Yeah, we have eight different locations. Mr. Howard of the Fire Department in Glendale actually has one from a few years ago, and he will tell you that it-
Oh, testimonial, huh?
Does work, and an active member in the Glendale-
It works, he says. Hey, Mr. Starbird.
Not that Chief Howard has ever mowed the lawn at the fire station, but...
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Very interesting. Okay. Al Hoffman, followed by Nancy Kent.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. Well, I guess we finally woke up the homeowners in Glendale at our last election. It's been a while since they've felt the need to go out and vote, and I guess we finally came to that need. And last night at our homeowners coordinating council, we had a great meeting. Councilman Quintero is the only councilman that regularly comes to the coordinating council meetings. Apparently, the rest of you don't feel that it's a worthwhile effort and that the homeowners are really not a viable organization in Glendale, and therefore you see it not fit to come. It must be that we're beneath what your priorities are to support our organization. I know that Mayor Weaver has talked about that, oh, the organization used to be great when I was president, but boy, it has sure become a, not a very viable organization anymore. That's wonderful support shown to our group. These people come out every month trying to get support and work together in getting things done in our town. And it is a shame that we don't get the support from the council members coming. Two years ago, I invited R. Najarian to come when he was elected council, to the council. As a new member, he did come and speak to us, but we've never seen him since then. And I think that's a real shame that an organization like that doesn't get any support. And I can tell that Councilman Yosefian really doesn't care about that at all, because he doesn't even pay attention to what I'm saying. And that's very typical of what we got. But the people have spoken, and Councilman Yosefian, two years from now, you're going to be on the tap, so maybe you ought to start paying attention to what's going on. I know you think it's funny. Right. That's how it is, people. That's how it is, Glendale. And we're going to have new direction now. Thank you.
Nancy Kent, followed by Margaret Hammond.
My name is Nancy Kent. I'm a resident of Glendale. And when I went to the Glendale Central Library last Wednesday, I noticed there was a scoping meeting there for the California High Speed Rail Authority, the proposal to have high-speed trains between cities in California. So if any, they're having five scoping meetings. If anyone is interested in giving input of things that should be taken into consideration for the EIR, for having high-speed rail between cities in California, there's just one left that's close to here, and it's next Tuesday, April 17th, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and also 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. that day at the L.A. River Center and Gardens at 570 West Avenue 26 in Los Angeles. And I believe that's the location that used to be Lowry's California Center. And if anyone is interested, they could Google this and find it, or go to the website, www.cahighspeedrail.ca.gov. And it says that, at the scoping meeting, I went to the tracks for this high-speed rail. It's not set where they will be going through the metropolitan area, but this says probably they will be going along the existing Metrolink tracks when they go through Glendale. Thank you.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Linda Lalion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and audience out there. Of course, I'm back again. It's Margaret Hammond with her favorite subject, banquet halls. I don't know that it'll ever get any better with the banquet halls, and I don't know what's happened to the discussion on them. But, you know, originally, I got involved in banquet halls because of the police department, because of the problems that were ongoing, how much it was costing the city, and that the city was not being repaid for the hundreds of thousands of dollars that was going out to police the banquet halls. And I know, for instance, up at the Montrose Collections, it's still ongoing. So, and whenever anything is going to be done, I don't know. There are still problems with banquet halls with the lack of parking. How do they get permits to be operating, not as banquet halls, but as restaurants, because they need less parking? And then when they morph into being banquet halls with 500 people at one time, the restaurant might be 100 people at one time in that location. But when it becomes a banquet hall, there's a lot more people all at one time. And the neighborhoods suffer because of the parking, the noise, the whole thing that's ongoing with that type of business. And they're not, I, I don't know. Somebody did say they thought that maybe banquet halls were now part of our description somewhere in our city ordinances or whatever zoning. I do have to find that out. I just was in a discussion about that today. The other thing is still, the absolute breaking of the law by these banquet halls, restaurants, whatever, with the outdoor grilling. When is that ever going to get taken care of and put a stop to it? I haven't had the chance to go again over, for instance, to the MGM, but I will do so this weekend and see if that is still the big, huge barbecue out in the alley, or the lane, whichever, whatever you want to call it, on public property. Cooking meals for profit on public property. They're not personal. They're not barbecues like you or I have in our yard. And they're not done for your friends and, and neighbors for free. It's done for profit, for profit, people. Think about that. No matter what anybody goes on about, well, we all have barbecues in our backyard. Yeah, but we don't sell the food. It's, it's, we are doing it for our own pleasure. There's a lot of other things around town that need our care and are looking at, if citizens want to look at what's happening in the city. But on the other hand, as I said at my point, I want to see these things resolved. I want to see the parking. Insist on any new business, any new apartments, anything, that they have enough parking. That is a very important point, and I don't care what anybody else says. That's what leads to our breakdown of our quality of life in our neighborhoods and in our city and in our downtown. And that is all the traffic that we have to try to get around and cause aggravation. People going through stop signs, going through, cutting you off. I mean, unbelievable, and for nothing, other than that they think they have to speed through town. And the people getting hit in the crosswalks. I mean, my God, this is horrendous. If we're probably one of the worst histories of people being hit in our crosswalks. It's a lack of consideration for your neighbors and for your friends. In the long run, we're all supposed to be one family, and no matter who or what, why would you want to run down an old lady and go off and leave her laying in the crosswalk? And that was one of the headlines this week. I mean, it's pretty sad. I, I think it's terrible. So again, we need to think of other people and not just ourselves and our pocketbooks and whatever. It's, we need to think of our quality of life for everybody in the city and take time to share. We all have a good life, that I do, you do, where we have nice homes and nice cars. A lot of people don't have that. They live in one room. They're glad to get a frozen meal a day, the, some of the seniors. So we do need to think of them. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Linda Lalion, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening. Speaking of quality of life, I'm again here on behalf of, first of all, my name is Linda Lalion, and I'm here on behalf of Car Park Neighborhood Watch. Few of us were at the Glendale Unified School District meeting last week, and unfortunately, we weren't able to show any of our slides. And I was told to call the person who's in charge, and I was told that Mr. Escalante does not want those pictures shown now or ever. In addition, we requested that we get on the agenda, and we were, right now, we haven't heard anything about that. So I'm here again. I have more pictures, and I know that, Mr. Zern, you're in the hot seat again. We're, I'm here on behalf of the, our Neighborhood Watch to actually thank you for, you know, having a meeting with us a couple of weeks ago, but things are still the same. And I have some slides that I'd like to show since the last slide that I showed here. Let me see. I don't know if the screen is ready or not. And a couple of, a couple of issues. I know that, um, that one. Thank you. Now, these slides, you saw these, so I'm going to really quickly go, go through them. But the last few happened two weeks ago, and the issue, I know that, Mr. Zern, you have a meeting with Mr. Franklin, who is assistant to Mr. Escalante, the superintendent. There's a sense of urgency that we have that I don't think you or the school district has. And it's pretty sad because, again, our quality of life is really very poor in our neighborhood. And, you know, we like this to happen much faster than it is happening. It's been going on for, you know, actually, the situation has escalated in the last year because of the new field. But I've been in correspondence with Mr. Zern, but prior to that, with Mr. Franklin and the high school, Glendale High School for about six months, not only me, but also the, you know, the group of us. And, you know, it's just talk, and talk is cheap. So we really would like to actually request to the council members that the city council instruct the city attorney to file a public nuisance law against Glendale High School. Because unless something seriously is done, I don't think Glendale Unified School District really cares or pays really attention to us little people down, you know, in our neighborhood. And I did go around Hoover High, and I did see the way the city, the streets are one-way going around the school. They were very nice, no parking signs over there. And just the way, you know, other neighborhoods are being taken care of, we are not. And we're just really getting very impatient.
The mouse is right there, Miss Law.
Well, this is, these are some pictures from before. So, you know, this is during the day, in the morning and in the afternoon, but also during the games. Now, again, I will go through these really quickly. These are the buses that are still coming around because the school refuses. I received an email from Mr. Franklin indicating that the gate will stay open. Okay? So if the gate's going to stay open and the traffic is two-way traffic, what are we going to do? How is this going to be resolved? I don't know. Okay? You can see, you know, someone is going to get hit one of these days, and I think that's when you guys will, you know, do something about it. This is a, again, a bus with a diesel fume that, that gentleman was talking about, which, you know, right underneath our windows. Okay? The driver's gone. I don't know when he's gone, maybe to get a drink, but the diesel is still running. Okay, so now, last, yes. You want to see that again? Let's see.
You're ever a minute, so you better-
Look at that. Isn't that, I know. No parking, okay? These were the chartered buses, okay? I know the homeowners association has a cause for the, the view and everything, but believe me, this is the view that we have to look at. Okay? I'm not going to show that. This is the evening of, let's see, I think it was Wednesday night, last Wednesday night, parent meeting. Okay? This is the same kind of traffic that we have. Now it's in the evening, no parking. I just need two, two more minutes.
No, no. You get five minutes. Everybody gets the same.
No, a few people got a little bit more.
Mr. Howard, can I allow oral communications for one person to go on and not others?
Your discretion. It's not a matter of what's important to one and what's important to others. Consistency is appropriate. If you, if you give more than five to one, other than a few seconds here or there, you, you need to give it, and you should, give it the same amount of time to all.
Okay.
For communication-
This is, this is the traffic and no parking, okay?
Ma'am, you're done. You're done.
Okay. I will be back again next week. This is, this is the band that's playing while going out.
Ma'am, ma'am, you are done. Please come back next week.
Mr. Weaver.
Miss, ma'am, you're done. Please take your seat. Mr. Hoffman, you're out of order, too. Keep your thoughts to yourself, sir, or you can leave. Keep talking, and I'll have you escorted out, too. Leon Mayer, he wanted seven minutes. He's getting five, like everybody else.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Public Library and the Friends of the Library Authors, Artists and Friends series. We have a special week coming up next week. Flyers are available all over at the library, the branches, and the city hall. So I'm just going to pinpoint several events we're having next week. First of all, on Monday, Edward Mir, Edward Mir's, Edwin Mir's famous historian, who- First of all, on Monday, Edward Mir, Edward Mir's, Edwin Bear's famous historian, who has read, authored a book, Fields of Honor: Epic battles of the Civil War. And in that book, like few other historians have been able to capture, he has captured the drama of the excitement, the tragedy of the Civil War. He was a national parks historian, and he used to go for the last forty years, till the last few years, of course. He did battlefield tours with people from all over the country, and his battlefield tours were just classics. Ron White from, Dr. Ron White, famous Lincoln historian, we'll introduce him. Of course, I'll introduce Ronald White. And Joe Mandoki, our own Robert E. Lee, will greet you at the door. So come to, that's Monday, the seventeenth, sixteenth. On the seventeenth, we're having a classic event. We're having a Sudanese genocide survivor who has written, who will discuss the book, What is the What?, which is second or third on the LA Times Best Book List. Now, everybody who knows a lot about literature knows Dave Eggers is a famous writer. And this is a biographical sketch of the life of Valentino Deng, who we are bringing to the library. And we're gonna have, and he's gonna talk about some terrible things, earth-shaking things and heart-rendering things about how he escaped out of this Sudanese genocide. And Dave Eggers actually rescued him from there. And that'll be a treat. It'll be a moving thing, and we know there'll be a lot of people there. To introduce Valentino, we're having Father Vaskin, who is the pastor of St. Peter's Church, Armenian Church in Glendale. And he's been to Rwanda himself, and he's the one who, one of the ones who helped Governor Fortsnager put a ban on our commerce, so to speak, of the state of California with Sudan until they straighten out their act. The third event is Sisters in Crime. We're gonna have five famous mystery writers who will be there on a panel, and then the panel will be chaired by Michael Mallory. Michael Mallory is well-known for being the reincarnation of Sherlock Holmes. He's done his own series on Sherlock Holmes. On the next day, on the eighteenth, I believe, we'll have a special author from, or, I don't know if he's written a book, but a special author about Armenian justice and discussion about what's happening in Armenia as far as law and order. And then we will have, on Saturday, the nineteenth, Carolyn Johnson, who has done a movie critical column for the news press from time to time. And her subject is Poetry Workshop: Don't Let It Molder in a Drawer. And anybody's heard of Carolyn Johnson knows what a lively, spirited person she is, and that should be a great event as well. So I hope I've not gone past the five-minute mark. I have a lot more I would like to say, but I'll just sit down now and invite you again to come there. All these events are seven o'clock in the evening. Parking is validated if you want to park over at the garage on Maryland, and it's free. Come and buy books, enjoy yourself. I would've had Kara here to do this introduction, but she had to go home to go to sleep. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Allen, followed by Herbert Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. I'm Barry Allen from Vanguard. And by the way, for all of those who've called, I'm alive and well, not to worry, and I'm back. Steve, I want you to know the, the tree limb came down nicely, and the, the two stanchions are awaiting a pickup. Thanks so much for that. Of course, we've, we've had an interesting election, and I guess it's still not over yet with some 2,000 or thereabouts votes to be counted, provisional ballots and absentee ballots, so who knows what could change. Last year, with the appointment of the mayor, the week before, and Vanguard will be doing the same thing, we had put in a, a list of potential appointees for mayor. As, as the public knows, the council will get together next week and decide who's going to be the mayor for the year. And last year, Eva Longoria won, and Frank Quintero was two. So, you know, who knows what's gonna happen? I think that is gonna be the first major challenge for our new council member, and that is to, is into the mayoral selection process. And I know that there have been problems with intimacy among the council members, and I think that, who knows, maybe Mr. Draymond can help bring a solution to that particular problem and get the council all talking with each other rather than having to go through methods of having a go-between to communicate for them. And maybe we can take a serious look at another issue regarding the appointment of the mayor. You know, every two years, there's an election. And one of the perks of the election is for that person who wants to be appointed mayor next April, April of 2008, to be, to be able to put on his incumbency ballot, "I am the mayor." Now, as all of us know, there is no elected position of mayor, it's just a council member with another tag on his name. But maybe we should make sure that the incumbents who are candidates in two years don't have that particular opportunity to hang "mayor" on their ballot indicator, along with their name. So maybe we should make sure that there are three council members who will be eligible for reelection, whose terms will be ending in two years, Mr. Quintero, and Mr. Najarian, and Mr. Yusefian. Maybe we should make sure that one of those three is selected for this year, next week, and then one of the remaining candidates or council members, Mr. Weaver or Mr. Draymond, selected the following year in April of 2008. So nobody has an unfair position. It's all a level playing field. And maybe we can, we can bury some of the animosity from the past in the process that will occur next week when we select the, the mayor. Now, who should it be? You know, there are three people sitting here who would like to be appointed, and one, of course, would like to be appointed to the Airport Commission, and Mr. Najarian is doing a fantastic job on the MTA Board. So, you know, how are we gonna draw these lines in the sand? And I think that the, the council, every one of these people who will be voting next week, and Mr. Draymond is not sitting up there yet, but the people who will be voting next week, I think that the, the public should be in communication with them and tell them what their thought is to set aside their personal animosities towards their colleagues and select the appropriate person to be the mayor for starting next week. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard, asking for accountability from everyone on the dais. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I'm gonna take a couple of my minutes here to, to give a resident of Southern Glendale an opportunity to demonstrate a couple more things concerning the traffic at Glendale High. While I was running for office and doing some canvassing, I was...
Excuse me. Put this time off a second. Mr. Howard, can we do this?
I'm not sure what's going to be done. Mr. Mayor, you have the discretion of whether or not, and I've advised, again, relative to the slippery slope of allowing the trading of time, where one person has five minutes, but they donate two or three minutes. If Mr. Milano is going to speak about anything he wants, he's certainly entitled to do it.
Correct. But we have not, to my knowledge, allowed the trading of time at oral communications.
We, I think we've done it once in an agendized item, and that resulted in a number of problems with individuals beginning to stand up and donate time to the point where you weren't even sure how to keep track of it any longer.
Well, I assume Mr. Milano is allowed to speak on whatever he wants to.
Oh, yes, yes.
So if she clicks the photos, I'm sure he can speak on the item.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Menuchyan, wait up.
You know, she seemed passionate about what she needs to present. I'd like to see her present it. I, you know, rules and regulations are fine, but...
I understand. Mr. Milano, you can speak, she cannot. You use your five minutes the way you want.
Thank you.
There'll be a different mayor next week. You can have it a different way. Right now, I'm gonna tell everybody, when you've got these complaints, you ought to be going to the staff during the week and getting them straightened out. All we're gonna do is have staff here, taking notes, and then getting back. This, you say one thing one week, he responds, then another week, it goes on and on and on. Any citizen in this city is permitted to call anybody on the city staff, address their questions. Bringing it to us doesn't help anything. It's the staff that has to do the work. Call Mr. Zern up, (548) 3900. Trouble at the crosswalks? Talk to him. Staff working with them on this? I know, I drive this street all the time. It's terrible. I thought staff was working on it. But bringing more slides in, taking more time out, to me, is wrong with you. You're permitted to do this, but I'm telling you, it's staff that's going to have to do it. So why wait a week to come and tell us, when you can call staff the very next day? If you're not getting response from staff, if they're not performing, then call councilmen so we can call Mr. Starbert and say, "Why is staff not performing?"
I have that all day.
No, when it gets done, but guess what? I'm gonna be asking staff tomorrow morning, "What's going on?" And Mr. Milano, you want your five minutes? You've got your five minutes.
Well, maybe I should propose a recall election while I'm at it.
Well, Mr. Milano, you can do whatever you want.
All right.
You've got five minutes.
We start. About two years ago, I had met with the prior principal of Glendale High School to discuss the issues of traffic in front of the school. I had also talked to one of the policemen, who was a regular in the area, and talked about what different objectives the city might have with regard to solving the problem of heavy traffic congestion, especially in the mornings and afternoons. The, I had actually made a call to Mr. Zern's office and talked to one of his traffic people and discussed what are the future plans to finally take care of the significant problem around Glendale High. It is a problem that has been ongoing for a very, very long time and has not been addressed appropriately. What we see here today with all of these pictures is an exacerbation of the problem. I believe that there are potential benefits that we can bring so that we can have some relief to the residents of Southern Glendale. And as I was saying, the operating word to most of the people in Southern Glendale, when I talked to them, is neglect. They felt, "We feel neglected," from the status of the roads, to the status of traffic, to the status of parking. What you see around Glendale High is an additional problem due to the success of the, of the turf that you promoted and the money that you lent. So there's a couple more pictures that you want to present?
It's not on the screen, though. I don't know why.
Just start clicking.
You start clicking.
Just start talking and...
There we go. Very well. The, I've, I am very familiar with this area because my son played football, and my daughter was in track. So it's an area that I frequent very often, and in many times, especially when there were evening meetings, like we had this past week with regard to Parents' Night, you can hardly find any parking in the area. Everything is absolutely booked up, and you have to actually walk about two blocks away to get the nearest place. But I think that as far as the events and the, and the type of traffic that we actually have, there might be a solution with one-way traffic coming around through the back and perhaps going and exiting out. I forgot the name of the road.
Campus.
Campus.
Colorado and East.
This street is campus, yeah, but there's the one that extends all the way out by Park, by Car Park.
And to Car, Car Park, and then down there is Colorado.
Yeah, all the way to Colorado. But I think that the, the type of issues that we have with traffic and parking are fairly significant in this area and needs some addressing to, especially now that the, that the fields are being used extensively. Okay? Thank you very much with this, with this regard.
And this is the Sunday morning...
Please, Mr. Milano, you're doing the talking.
The, yeah, she's mentioning the fact that the fire department uses the field for training purposes.
Sunday morning, Thursday morning.
Please, Mr. Milano, you're doing the talking, nobody else.
Very well. The, I, I think I managed to convey the issues to city council. I think that she can come back next week and, and round out some of the issues.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. What I've, what I wanted to convey is a, a, now I have a higher appreciation for the amount of work that goes into, you know, the commitment to run and the campaign. And of course, I have a greater appreciation for all of you behind the dais. And, and I want to give my, my thanks to, to Mr. Menuchyan for the, at least in all of the meetings that we had, he always gave me a warm welcome, and I always felt very comfortable, you know, speaking next to you and after you. I've, I think that all of us owe a debt of gratitude for all the years that you've given us. You've always been very respectful. I always appreciated that. And I always appreciated the times we had to discuss the budget and discuss all the city issues. You're always very welcoming in that regard. You know, I'm sorry that the turnout did that, was not to what you expected, but I think that there are a lot of people who are appreciative of all your efforts. The, I would like to suggest that perhaps we can move forward with, with the idea of campaign contribution limits and campaign reform, and I hope that I can come up to, to the agenda sometime soon. Thank you very much.
That concludes oral communications. And now it's time for council comments. I'd like to turn first to Mr. Zern. You're on the hot seat. You want to explain why people cannot hear the signals and what you're doing on campus?
I'll let Mr. Zern respond to the signals. You let me first respond to Ms. LaLion's concerns regarding campus.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. I thought this was city council comments.
And staff.
Yeah, okay, because I had my hand raised.
Well, I was...
Pardon me.
I'm trying to get Mr. Zern to respond to those two first.
Well, okay, then I'd like to just say, this is the second time...
Okay, Mr. Zern, you go first.
Yeah, thank you. This is the second time that those neighbors are here. She came alone today, but the past, she had quite a few neighbors here, and I don't want this to just turn into, "We're meeting with the school, et cetera." The fact is, the city of Glendale is responsible for the streets, responsible for the traffic, responsible for that neighborhood. So I want to see us do something about it, and I mean something other than just meeting with the school. Because from what I've been able to tell, once we did the, the turf, it seems like this is some sort of enterprise zone. They aren't just holding functions for city or for Glendale Unified School District needs, but they also seem to be leasing space to, there was a, a college, she mentioned, that was practicing there, their band, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's gone beyond what we expected from this field, so let's do something about it. That's why we have a traffic engineer and why we have Mr. Zern, et cetera, et cetera. And I hope it's brought to our agenda. I hope the staff does something about it quickly, and it comes up on the agenda so we can vote and decide what we're gonna do, whether it's gonna be one-way streets, parking, whatever it is that we're gonna do. But let's take care of this neighborhood, because it's obvious from those slides and from the amount of people that were here a couple of weeks ago that it's a serious issue. It's not just in casual, casual situation there at this point. And they've been putting up with it for quite a while.
Okay, Mr. Starbert.
Yes. On that note, let me say, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Quintero, staff doesn't disagree with you at all. In fact, it's our view, the residents have a legitimate complaint. And frankly, relative to the district's response, I've emailed Mr. Escalante, and I've spoken with him and met with him personally on the matter, and I wasn't at the school board meeting, so I don't know what response they received from him there, but his response to me has been, "If you have some ideas on how we can address it, we are opening, we're open to listening to them." We have had meetings among staff, we've met with the residents, and frankly, we recognize that although it may seem to be a simple solution to close the gates on Campus Drive, that will just push that problem off into a different neighborhood, which typically happens in these issues. So it'll either be relocated over up on Broadway, or it'll start creating a problem someplace else. So we've asked our engineering staff to come up with some ideas on how likely internally the high school will be able to redirect traffic and parking. So rather than remove a problem from campus and relocate it onto some other street or some other neighborhood, we can have some thoughts for the school district on how they can solve this problem. We're not taking it lightly. And all the responses I've had from Dr. Escalante have been very positive and open to any ideas that we have on how this problem can be solved. The easiest one of which seems to be to limit the access off of Campus Drive. But then you have to go look and see, okay, where are the buses going to go? Where's the traffic going to go? Where are people going to park? Where are the students going to go, many of whom on foot, access that campus off of Campus Drive? But we don't disagree with the residents' concerns, and frankly, we aren't giving this minimal attention. We've been giving... aren't giving this minimal attention. We've been giving it quite a bit of attention. But it's not a problem that's gonna be solved easily.
I'll tell you one. Either make it a red zone on the west side, or load and unload only, and park the buses down on Colorado, and make the kids walk a half a block.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, that isn't all of their problems. Buses parked on the street, so it's more complex than that.
I know, but if you-
Frankly.
If you want to give more room for the cars to move, taking a parking lane along. I drive that two or three times a week in the evening. And if you're having cars parked on that west side, their back of the bleachers, you know, you're taking away traffic lane there. So you could easily remove it by putting the buses down around the corner. Mr. Zern, do you want to respond at all what you're doing on that, and then take on the intersection issue?
Well, I, just to add to what Mr. Starbird said, as Ms. LaLion said, we had a, we had a residence meeting. We immediately went back, briefed Mr. Starbird, and I sent the traffic engineers to come up with some solutions. They already have half a dozen, of which we passed on to the school district, Dr. Franklin, and Mr. Paz yesterday, for them to consider. We have a follow-up meeting with Dr. Escalante and Mr. Starbird to talk turkey on those issues. But we've already come up with about half a dozen different traffic engineers.
And when will you have the meeting? In the next week or two?
Yeah, we have it this, a little later this month, but it's already scheduled.
Later this month.
Right. But I've already passed this on to Assistant Superintendent Franklin, told him, "This is where we think you can, you can park buses, bring kids in, create drop-off zones."
You have to wait three months, three weeks to do it.
Red curbs. Well, there's some things we can do right away. There was other issues. You know, there was, there's issues about-
I know, it's multiple issues.
Sight distance, there's issues about, some issues about speeding when, when school isn't in session, actually. There's a, the opposite effect that the streets are kind of open.
My concern, the public says there's a problem. We know there's a problem, and you say you're not gonna meet for two or three weeks. Later this month, it sounds the impression we're moving slow.
No, the staff's working, has been working since, since we met with, with the residents.
Okay. Now, you want to address Bonnie Adams and Mike Nagel?
Well, I, I sent Mr. Starbird a note today that just went over where we've put the signals. It's a test program, and obviously, there's a difference of opinion on, on what one person may think is suitable versus what another person thinks is suitable. I haven't had any contact with Ms. Adams, other than these meetings.
Are they there?
We have devices there, yes, and we're using it for both hearing impaired and sight impaired folks. So the vibratory issues come into play, tactile issues, and other things.
It is a test.
It is a test. It is a test. But there are other, other sounds you can use. Ms. Adams mentioned chirping and chong. I'd be happy to talk to them at any time.
I'd talk with them and work it out during the week, rather than coming up and tell you, and then you respond, and then you go away and come back another week after they went out and tested what you did, and then come back and say you didn't do it. You know, if you two groups would communicate with each other, it shouldn't be necessary for them to come in here.
I'd be happy to do that.
Is that fine with you? Bonnie, Mike?
Okay.
I mean, I-
Good. No, no, I, just yes or no? Yes? You'd like to meet, talk? Fine, see what you can work out. If it's not working right, it is a test, it is experimental, and there are gonna be bugs in it. Certain sounds may not work, whatever. But communicate with them.
Well, Mr. Zern hasn't answered any of my questions.
Well, Bonnie Adams, please afterwards, I will, I'm asking Mr. Starbird, do you have, Mr. Zern, call you tomorrow, whatever, and work it out. You know, he said, she said, hear it all the time. It just doesn't cut it. So work it out. I'd hate to come back a third week and hear the same things again. Doesn't serve anybody. Are there any other council comments? Yes, Mr. Esefian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have stayed quiet, as per our agreement. So I have several items I want to deal with. First, I'd like to talk to the issue of the Carol Moyer program. Mr. Zern, are we applying for any of those grants to change some engines on our vehicles?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Esefian, we apply every year. We put in a number of programs. Unfortunately, like a lot of grant programs, funds are limited, but if you recall in the past, we've had Carol Moyer money for buses.
Right.
Had Carol Moyer money for a refuse truck conversion. So we apply every year.
So we're applying, so we're not gonna meet the deadline. That's one thing. The second thing that I'm gonna ask is, can this council initiate, uh, uh, okay, permit parking only by the residents?
Yes.
Can the council initiate it all itself? And I'm talking about this neighborhood. Can this council put it on the agenda, and if majority passes, that the people who park on that street are the residents, and it's permit parking? I know it's part of our, our tools program, it was in our-
Right.
Neighborhood services, but I want to know, is can council initiate something like that, instead of getting 75% signature?
The short answer is yes, because-
That's what I want to know.
The preferential parking program is by ordinance, and essentially, if the council wants to establish a preferential parking district, you can adopt an ordinance to do it.
Okay, that's one thing. I do agree with Mr. Quintero. One thing with Mr. Quintero was, it was actually the third time they were here, not the second time. They came the day that I had to leave, so that's the third time they've been here. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to put this item on the agenda, so it would come back to us, so we could discuss it, because I think we did a lot of discussion that was not appropriate. But let's, I want to discuss that. I want to discuss all of our options in a quick manner. The other thing was, police chief is back in here, or the assistant police chief, or did he leave already? Okay, in the past, we have had a report on the amount of policing costs on the issue of the banquet facilities, and I think there was a report, the number was much less than what one of the speakers talks about. She continues to bring up the issue, and she continues to bring this false numbers. I'd like to get refreshed on that number. So I'd like a report brought up, so we know what it is. So when she speaks, we actually have a document, and also make a copy available to her, so she knows that also. One other thing that I think another speaker brought up is the issue of the high-speed rail. I saw that little pamphlet about what they were gonna do. There was talks about creating grade crossings, because a high-speed rail can't be at grade. It actually has to create the grade crossings. The question is, who is going to pay for those grade crossings? They talked about that this rail authority will pay for the gra, how are they paying for this whole thing?
Bonds.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I actually attended the scoping meeting that was mentioned. At this point, they're only doing a project-level environmental impact report. They are not discussing the, the budget for the project, and they just want to do the environmental assessment. However, I must, I must say that we have prepared a set of written comments, and we are coordinating with Jono's staff as well, so that we can get comments from the transportation traffic section, consolidate them with planning, and we have raised the grade crossings that they have promised. We have actually asked detailed analysis of which, which intersections, and we've also put in some comments about non-crossing areas in light of our experience a few years ago with MetroLink accidents, which was not at a grade crossing, or it was not at an intersection. So we have a number of comments that we're preparing to write to them, to ask them to address those in the environmental impact report.
Part of the reasons I'm bringing that up, as I saw that, is a couple of weeks ago, or last week, I think, we voted on spending another $6 million for modifying our grade crossings, and we will spend probably another five, total of maybe 11 to 12 million dollars. I just want to know that we don't go out there, if this is actually feasible, maybe we should study that. I don't want to spend $12 million, and then they come back later, about three years later, and say, "Well, we're just gonna completely change this." So I don't know how they're doing this, and it's great that they're doing environmental, but at the end of the day, money is not gonna make this fly. The last item that I want to talk about, and I didn't want Mr. Hoffman to think that I was not listening to him, I was writing down, because this new system we have, we have to write this down, because so many people speak. The issue of why I haven't been to Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. All I can say to the speaker that I had attended that organization since 1989, when it was in Harold Cross's house, when the gentleman who was speaking didn't even attend those meetings. He was not coming around, because he didn't even know there. Now, I have attended that association since 189 until 1996, when I was appointed to the BZA. At that time, I stopped attending, because I was a member of the BZA, and I didn't want any conflict of interest, because the association, once in a while, would appeal things, and I didn't want to be conflicted out. All I could say, Mr. Hoffman, the minute I get an invitation, like Mr. Najarian got, and the invitation says, "What is the purpose? And what am I going to talk about?", I'll be more than happy to come. In the past, when I was a president, when Mr. Weaver was a president, and vice president, and back and forth, we generally did not like the fact that the council members were present there, so we could speak freely. That was part of the reason we did not. We would only send invitation to council members at certain times. And so if some council members feel like they would like to be there, and you have no objection to it, so be it. But I do not feel comfortable, being that in that forum, the main purpose of that organization was to exchange information, speak freely, not having to worry that there's somebody in there taking information back. And that was the reason. And I will not be coming to your association unless I get a letter, because I still strongly believe that is the purpose of that association, what it should be doing. I think it's doing fine, that association, I was a member. It went, at the time, at Harold Cross's house, there were four of us, and then it went up to 28 homeowner members, then it went down to eight, then it went up, and it went down. It's no different than any other association. So I'm pretty sure that it will continue in that matter. But all I could say, send me an invite, and see if I show up or not, and then you can criticize me. Thank you very much. That's the last.
Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple items. The first one I'd like to request to be put on the agenda, I guess through Mr. Zern. A couple of weeks ago, I asked for a demonstration of our Next Bus Project, which is a GPS tracking of our, of our Beeline buses, as well as the scheduling. And then I started thinking, I know, it's dangerous, right? Why don't we get a-
I can say that.
Perhaps it would be better, Mrs. Zern, through your office or through Jono, to get a more comprehensive informational report on what we are doing in the city of Glendale to address the traffic issues. And I mean, not future planning, I don't mean widening the roads, I mean, today on the ground. I understand we've got a control room in our building that monitors traffic flow, traffic signals, obstructions, and even as a councilman, I'm not fully up to speed on that. I'm, I know that this question always arises. People do complain about traffic. We learned about that through our long-range plan and our survey. Hopefully, someone can address that and let us know exactly what we do currently to address the traffic, but also, let's have the transit component as well. And hopefully, it won't be too long. It won't be an item we need to vote on, but just as information to let the folks out there know what we're doing. And just because we're not always tooting our horn, I think it's important that the folks know that, that there are current measures in place, dealing with the traffic flow, transit usage, et cetera. So whenever that-
Mr. Najarian.
With the mayor's permission-
As part of that, then, we'll just roll the Next Bus in as part of the transit component of the overall report.
I think that would be a good thing to do. The next item is a note I got from my wife, addressing the selection of beverages in our new city beverage machines. I know we had a contract that we had voted on not too long ago, and I, I believe that there were gonna be, we had placed certain restrictions on the type of drinks that were available. The complaint I'm getting is that there are too many sodas, high-calorie, high-sugar, caffeine, caffeinated drinks, and I'd like to have a report back as to exactly what sort of limitations we put on that. And it was my understanding that there were gonna be more of a healthy choice, flavored waters, the Propel type of drinks, et cetera, juices and all that. So we have one actually behind City Hall, and my, my son was waiting for me one day, and he went up and bought a Coke, and was bouncing off the walls a little bit later. So if we could please get back with, with something on that. The next item I'd like to raise is, perhaps you saw in the news press today, the new electric personal scooter devices. That's not the name for it. This is the self-propelled police one-man units, an advanced version of the Segway, and we have two of them, I understand. And those funds to purchase those came from, from our efforts at lobbying, and these funds came from Washington DC through the Homeland Security Department. So for those of us who wonder, who wonder, "What the heck do we do in Washington?", it's not a huge amount of money, but it's something that is starting to pay dividends, be it modest at the time. My next comment is to Mr. Allen. You're begging the question as to who should be mayor, so we're dying to hear who your choice is, and maybe you'll let us know electronically who your, who your choice would be on that. My, my last comment is to Mr. Hoffman, and the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. I didn't know you missed me so much. You did invite me two years ago. I was very happy and excited to attend, a little nervous. I think Mr. Starbird came along with me to, to hold my hand in that first meeting. I didn't know I was expected to show up. I would be happy to, to come to your meetings, if, if that's what you'd like. If you could just give me a phone call, I think that's the first way I was invited. I strongly support the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. You play an important role in the city. I've enjoyed support individually from several of the members and, and the homeowners that attend. My door is always open, Mr. Hoffman, and it doesn't have to be a, under the guise of the Homeowners Coordinating Council. If any of the individual homeowner groups would like to speak to me on an issue, or individually, my door is always open. Just let me know, and I'm happy to attend at any time, my schedule permitting. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Menuchyan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to reserve a couple of minutes before the end of the meeting to make a few comments.
Sure.
Possibly.
No problem. Okay. More comments? Let's, please.
Seven is adoption of ordinance. At 7A is ordinance, adding Section 1.04.100 to Chapter 1.04 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, regarding the present, presentment of claims against city, offered on 40307 by Councilmember Esefian.
Move 7A.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Esefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
Eight is action items, and at 8A is director of Public Works regarding report on bids for a mountain street widening improvement project. At 8A1 is motion awarding construction contract to Alliance Street Works, Inc., in the amount of $1,478,681.21, and rejecting all other bids. At 8A2 is resolution appropriating $58,062. 758,062.
Mr. Esefian.
$62.
Move, move 8A1.
There's a discrepancy between the computer.
8A1's been moved.
The correct number for 8A2 is 758,062.
What? Two?
Yes.
Yes.
A2?
No, I just, I just-
No, no, no. What, what number did you just say? Under 8A2. What is the number?
At 8A2 is resolution appropriating 758,062. Yes, okay. The computer did not have the correct amount.
Okay. Has been a motion on 8A1. Was there a second? Let's try.
Councilmembers-
Mr. Quintero, okay, then roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Esefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye.
Move 8A2.
With the correct amount.
Right on the agenda.
Okay, okay. Discussion, roll call.
Yes, discussion.
Mr. Sorry, didn't see you.
8A1.
8A1?
I'm sorry, 8A, you did 8A2, 2 was, was the-
We did 8A1.
Right. Not so fast, you guys. Not so fast.
I didn't see your hand out there.
I think a lot of times, we go through these motions, and we zip through it, but- And I think this particular resolution, an agenda item, is a perfect example of cooperation between the school district, the Glendale Community College, whom I see Mr. Larry Serat, Vice President, is in attendance, and the city. It's been floated out there during this silly season that there is no cooperation between the council and those two bodies. But in this, this particular item is the widening of the road, which is required because the college is building their wonderful new structure, the intent of which is to reduce the traffic off the city streets and clear up the students always hunting for a parking space on the Mountain Avenue and Verdugo and Kenyatta and the surrounding neighborhoods. It involved negotiations with the school district as well regarding the type of setback and width of the sidewalk that they would require on their adjacent property, which is the uphill slope where there was the landslide currently where the, the college view, a school is situated. The, the college was facing increased construction costs. We were negotiating for quite some time, I know this because I was on the college board at the time. The, the city was, at one point, I believe we made an offer to loan the college the $1 million, and fortunately, the college's financial situation firmed up and the loan was not necessary, they were able to pay for it themselves. So, I think we should pat ourselves on the back, along with the college and the school district, we are working together. Here's a project that's going to affect, make it easier for the, the college to complete their, their parking garage. The roadway down Mountain is going to be much safer, the parking on the streets, we're not going to have the students hunting around, and what a wonderful little story this is, and I think everyone needs to know that before we zip through this motion at the end of the council agenda. So, that's my comment.
I think I'd respond to, Mr. Najarian, this is the awarding of the construction contract, it's been before us two or three times during the process leading up to the award, so I wasn't trying to ignore the public on this one, I don't think any of us were.
No, I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that-
It's a good point you made.
He just wants to be patted on the back.
I think we all, something, you know, when we screw up, we hear it, but, and when we deserve it, we deserve it, but this is a, a good news story for all three governmental boards that everyone is, is a winner on this, so that's my point.
Okay. Now, we still have eight A two.
Already moved it.
And was a second.
There was, there was a motion by council member Eusefian and seconded by Quintero.
Have a roll call?
Certainly. Before I do, I just, I feel as though I need an explanation for the $700,000 discrepancy in reading for any of our viewers at home, who often wonder what goes on on this laptop here. This is the Granicus Program through which we electronically archive, and people can view the council meetings after they are over on the internet. There was a discrepancy in the uploading, we'll make sure that is corrected. But again, the correct amount for the appropriation is 758,062, which was moved by council member Eusefian and seconded by council member Quintero.
The record should reflect that, consistent with the Brown Act, the agenda did have the correct amount.
Thank you. With that, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Eusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Next, please.
At B is city attorney regarding discussion of cancellation, rescheduling of council meeting April 24, 2007. At B one is motion canceling April 24, 2007, meeting and continuing agenda items on May 1, 2007. At B two is motion canceling April 24th meeting and rescheduling, setting special meeting for April 25, 2007.
Mr. Eusefian.
Move eight B two.
I have two cards on this.
We already discussed this this afternoon.
I know, but we have public. First, you second?
No, is there a second?
Not yet. I'm just alerting she-
Hold on.
Second.
Okay. Now, we'll listen to the public after we already moved it.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that?
Albert Hoffman, two minutes, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Yeah, Mayor Weaver, councilmen and staff, I was just curious, if the council meeting is rescheduled, is this a holiday, or is it, is the city offices open on that day?
Mm-hmm.
They are.
Cities offices are open.
Pardon?
Cities offices are open.
They are open, okay. I was just curious why they, we had to reschedule the council meeting. Is there an event that night, or is there-
Mr. Starbird, can I answer that for you?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, April 24th is the date commemorating the Armenian genocide. We have our own events as part of the week of remembrance, in which there's events scheduled for evening of the 24th, and there are numerous events that frankly, we've anticipated various council members would likely want to attend in the course of the day. So, to show respect for that event, we've looked at rescheduling the meeting on Wednesday the following day to conduct business.
There will be an event at the Alex in the evening.
So, it's, it's an event that's happening.
Yes, it's open to the public.
There's an event happening at that time, and then there are events both in this community and outside throughout the course of the day commemorating the genocide memorial.
Okay. I wasn't sure what was-
Yeah. But City Hall, City Hall offices are open as usual for business.
Okay. Thank you.
Margaret Hammond.
I just, okay, the motion is now to be open, have the special meeting for April 25th at this time. That's the motion?
Yes.
Sounds good to me. Thank you very much.
See you on Wednesday, in two weeks. Okay, move in a second, if no further discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Eusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Next, please.
Nine, at hearings, nine A is acting director applying regarding appeal of tentative tract number 63488, also known as PSUV 2006-004, located at 601 Palm Drive, and nine A one is a motion to take off calendar.
Mr. Eusefian.
Move nine A one.
Second.
Move in a second.
Mr. Mayor.
This is a public hearing.
Might just note that taking off calendar was at the request of the applicant.
And we don't have to impose any hearing.
It's under hearing only because there was a previous published notice, so we've kept it on the agenda to inform the public that it's going to be taken off calendar. And there'll be a new notice and it will be rescheduled.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
No.
Quintero.
Yes.
Eusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Next, please.
Ten is reports, information or written communication.
This time, I'd like Mr. Menucha, he had asked to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to make a few comments following the elections. There's been a number of rumors about where I've been the past week. I just want to inform everyone that I've been on vacation with my family. Anything else is false, I'm not selling my house, or I'm not in whatever, just for the record, and I was on Torrey Pines Golf Course with my brother yesterday, so, just for the, just so people can know what I've been up to. I would like to thank a few people, I would like to thank Congressman Adam Schiff for his support, and Assembly Member Paul Krikorian for their support during the campaign, the campaign volunteers and staff that worked so hard over the past three months. I would like to congratulate John Drayman for a campaign that was run very efficiently and very, in a very clean manner, without attacking individuals in any underhanded way. And I'd like to congratulate him and wish him well. Eight years ago, I came to these council chambers with great ideals of building a better city, of providing greater access, and of fostering opportunities for the citizens of this wonderful, diverse and dynamic city. I am fortunate to have played a key role in the acquisition and preservation of Oakmont Five and of the Paulson, Murchison, Flint Canyon Tracts, as well as a number of mini-parks that we have built in areas that have the greatest needs, as well as the new library in Adam Square. I have had the opportunity to directly assist and witness revitalization efforts in Montrose and Adam Square and to usher in the age of Americana at brand. I have had the great honor to represent the city, to help guide its future, and to try my best to return a sense of dignity to our council during a particularly contentious time in Glendale history. I have made many friends along the way and sadly, lost a few in the process. I have tried to represent you, the community, to the best of my ability as a public servant and as a human being. I wish you all citizens, colleagues and staff, many thanks for the opportunity to serve the city, and I will remain active in local and regional governance. As I leave this chamber tonight, as your city council member, I'm filled with the same sentiments I held in my heart eight years ago when I began. May Glendale continue to be a growing, thriving city of opportunity and industry, of beauty and tremendous resources, and of good neighbors and friendships that last us through all of our days ahead. Good night, and I thank you, knowing full well that there are still votes to be counted. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Menucha. And it is kind of premature. I could be giving that speech in a week. So, we'll see what happens. The good Lord will-
We'll see.
Decide. Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Good luck to you too. With that, there's no further comments, is there a motion to adjourn?
There's new business.
Oh.
I move that the city attorney-
Councilmember Quintero.
I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into retainer agreements to utilize the legal services of Stephen Millich, Attorney-at-Law, to provide legal advice to the Civil Service Commission in matters pertaining to disciplinary appeals on an as-needed basis up through and including June 30th, 2008, and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap and an estimated budget for the handling of said matters.
Second.
No discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.